Okay, good morning. It's October the 29th. It's 9:00 a.m. I will call to order the meeting of the Salina County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Weath?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here. Please, if you're able to stand, join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not being discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members?
This issue about this fiber cable out there in the West Pleasant Hill area, they are violating airspace, they are violating directional boring, there is no compaction done when they backfilled it, they blocked access to my property. Each mineral right is a separate. There was no advance notice to them being in the area. If you understand, you remember how the murders has been out there in that area? There's one over in Remington, there was another north in Ottawa County, there was one across, there wasn't a murder, but there was an issue across the road meet to the north, a guy come outside because he was defending his property rights at 11 o'clock in the night on Frontier Road. Then you wonder how these people out there are so nervous, that it didn't even count what happened to me July 2015. So I'm here making sure that they're aware of what they're doing, they should be. Your property lines do not match when you use GPS surveying. So them property lines are not accurate. They're not, because when they surveyed, they're drug detained, up and over, losing gain, now GPS this way. So your property lines are not accurate.
Okay, thank you, Norm. Anybody else from the public like to speak? Okay, at this time, we'll move into our consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of the second agenda to extend the time for two RF, Rural Water District Eight ARPA projects, approval to the second agenda to extend the time for Rural Water District Three ARPA projects, the 2024 OCCK dot letter of support, approval of work plan for 2025 through 27 vision, and number eight, appoint the new members to the Health Department Advisory Council, Rachel Holt and Savannah Anshutes to the HDAC as approved by the HDAC at the last meeting on October the 10th. Are there any items any commissioner would like to remove or discuss? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes five zero. That will move us into our action items.
Operation Green Light for Veterans Proclamation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deputy Castile, Salina County Sheriff's Office, been chosen to read this. The Operation Green Light for Veterans Proclamation. Whereas the residents of Salina County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifice of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the veterans of Salina County have demonstrated unwavering commitment to duty and have made tremendous sacrifices in times of both war and peace. And whereas the Salina County has significant veteran community, as evidenced by active participation in organizations like the American Legion, VFW, and Military Affairs Council. Veterans in rural areas often face challenges such as accessing healthcare and support services due to geographical limitations. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas, an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas, studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas, active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas, Salina County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific regional recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, the Salina County Board of Commissioners hereby declares this time to salute and honor the services and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service and encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the windows of their place of businesses or residence on November 4th through November 11th, 2024. We are lighting up the buildings that we can and would encourage businesses and citizens to do the same. Last week, our Public Information Officer Melissa McCoy traveled to Pecah with the Kansas Association of Counties for the government, the governor's signing of the statewide proclamation adopted this day, 29th October, 2024, Commissioner Chairman Joe Hay Jr.
Okay, any questions? Any public comment? Okay, let's step forward. I'll give you a copy of the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move we proclaim November as Operation Green Light for Veterans Month.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to proclaim Operation Green Light. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Commissioner. I forgot that. Okay.
Bid award for Sheppel Road RCB and Simpson Road Improvements with Wayne Skitchfield from Assistant County Engineer.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So the Road and Bridge Department is requesting approval to accept the low bid for the Sheppel Road RCB and Simpson Road Improvements Project. Seal bids were opened on October 21st, 2024 at 11:00 a.m. with five bids received. Please refer to the attached bid tabulation for the details of the bid. The project beginning is at the intersection of Sheppel and Simpson Roads, running west on Sheppel Road where a new reinforced concrete box drainage structure will be replaced, will replace a wooden drainage structure, and north on Simpson Road to its intersection with Campbell Road. The existing bridge, a single span wooden structure, is too narrow and close to the intersection of Simpson Road and has rotten piles. The Simpson Road overtops during large rain events and washes out pretty severely. The new structure will be a double nine-foot by five-foot by 46-foot reinforced concrete drainage structure set further west of Sheppel Road to allow, on Sheppel Road to allow for better turning movements at the intersection. And the project will improve the drainage ditch on the west side of Simpson Road from Sheppel Road to Campbell to keep more water in the drainage ditch and keep it from running across the road. Contractor intends to complete the construction over the winter and early spring and will have 75 working days to complete the project once the roads are closed to traffic. Alternatives for actions are to accept the bid as indicated in the staff recommendation, accept the bid from a different contractor, or reject bids and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Our recommendation is to accept the low bid submitted by Reese Construction Company, Inc. for an estimated amount of work equal to $309,501.60. Funds for this project will be taken from the 127 Account Special Bridge Construction. The amount, the account has a current unencumbered balance of $2,971,066.79. And up to $200,000 towards the project, including right-of-way acquisition and construction, will be reimbursed from the county's Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund created under the American Rescue Plan Act. Are there any questions?
Quick question. Have you, what is the traffic count on this road out there? I mean, do you have that?
I don't have it at my disposal.
Okay, I was just curious. The other thing I just wanted to comment on, it's I, it's really interesting to see where all of these bids come in underneath our engineers' estimates. So that's a great thing that these all, some good bids.
You know, we're lucky to have local contractors who want to bid our projects, and that saves us quite a bit of money.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any public comment? Okay, I will bring it back to the Commission for Action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024-153 as presented.
Second the motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-153. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that passes five zero.
Thank you, Wayne.
Noxious Weed Truck with David Flaherty, Director Expo Center.
Morning, Commissioners. Today, our request for action is to award a purchase of one new single, one-ton, single-axle, foil-drive, regular cab truck. Seals were opened October 21st, 2024, 10:00 a.m. at the City County Building, Room 209. Three bids were received. A, Stivers 2024 Dodge Ram 3500 Single-Axle Regular Cab, $55,800 base bid, and then plus $145 for a skid plate added on, for a total of $55,945. Home Automotive Center for 2025 Silverado Regular Cab, $57,739 base bid, and then plus $1,409 for four-corner strobe lights, for a total of $59,148. C is Long MacArthur, 2025 Ford F-350 Regular Cab, $59,995 base bid, plus $830 for a four-corner strobe light, for a total of $60,825. Alternative reaction is accept and award the bid to Stivers for the 2024 Dodge Ram, $55,800 base bid, plus $145 for the skid plate totaling $55,945. Reject the bids and re-bid, or deny all three bids. Staff recommends accepting the award to the bid and awarding the bid to Stivers in the total amount of $55,945. Specs were reviewed and met due to repair costs and the ability to keep this 1995 Ford F-350 up and going. This truck will replace that 1995 Ford F-350, and the 95 will be sold on purple web. Budget impact is the funds will come from the Capital Reserve on the, on the Weed Department, is 021080827060, which is the Noxious Weed Capital Outlet Equipment Reserve. Current balance is $161,451.96. The remaining balance, if awarded, the $55,945 will be $105,506.96. And I stand for questions.
My question is, is on the, on the Stivers bid, it has nothing on there at all about the four-corner strobe lights where the other two have. Did they not bid the four-corner strobe lights?
It came into their package. It was in with their package.
So that is included in that $55,000 bid?
Correct. And the skid plate, they had just called and asked if we wanted to add it on, because the truck is going through, this is one of the trucks that carries the mules and tanks in it, so it will park in the ditches, and then possibly through somebody's pasture. So I had just told him if he wanted to add it on as an addendum, that was fine, but I didn't put it as a base, a base bid.
You mean the skid plate?
Correct. The four-corner lights is in his package.
I just wanted to ask, where's the Stivers out of? How do we know them?
Alabama.
It's a dealership that is out of Alabama. We have purchased from them before.
Okay, I just, that brings me to a point that this is one of those, those occasions that I think that the, the lowest bid is not the best bid. We have a local business that employs, I don't know, 25 to 50 people over there. I'm not sure what they employ. They all pay, spend their money in Salina County, property taxes, et cetera. I can go on and on about what, what that local business means to, to the, to Salina County. And I think this is one of those times that we need to look at a little bit different bid. I've never, just as the Commissioner alluded to, I've never heard of Stivers. I've barely heard of Alabama, other than in the political part of it. But, you know, that's a long way off, and we'll probably never hear from them again. I mean, I just think that we've got to look and protect our local businesses and spend our money locally.
You know, I agree, because I don't know how many times we've got bids in and we ask, well, didn't we even have any local businesses even, you know, even give us a bid? And some of them say no. And I'm really happy to see that we've got at least two here this time that are locally. And I agree with, agree with Commissioner that, you know, we need to support those local businesses.
Quick, also, oh, I'm sorry.
Don't we have verbiage in, in the bidding process that addresses low bid and local bid? And could you refresh us on that?
We do. So we do have a local preference portion of our purchasing policy. The local preference piece of it is if the bids were within 1% of, so if it's a, if the low bid is not local, but there's a local bidder that is within 1% of the low bid, then the preference would be given to the local bidder.
Okay, and that's the rules that we set up to?
Correct. That's what, what is in the purchasing policy.
Thank you. Is there any transportation cost at all involved with the county to get that product here?
That's all cost included.
Okay.
I agree with the Chair and with Commissioner Vidrickson on this situation about purchasing local. It is a fine line, though, you know, in the future, because if you constantly reject somebody from out of town or from out of state, you know, they, they stop bidding. But in this case, I mean, Alabama's a long ways away. The second bidder is a community leader, and I don't know how we get around that 1%, but I would be supportive of that.
And I just also want to just comment on that in regards to that situation right there, is that it wasn't that long ago where we gave the department head or the Rural Fire District the rights to, and we approved a purchase that was a little higher than the bottom deal. And so
On the fire department?
Yes. So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm with the other Commissioners on this, is that I think this would be a good time to.
And as a reference to, I'll just add in there that they did, they did win another bid on my Expo Center truck back in 2022 or 2023. I don't remember what it was, but so many are, they are out there bidding. I find it surprising that they can bid from Alabama, prep and ship here, and, and beat out a, a local bid. I, I find that a little amazing. I, I hear what the fellow Commissioners say, and I would lean that way. I just think we need to readdress our 1%. What, why have that verbiage in there if, if we're just not going to follow it? We, we need to change it, delete it, or something. But we, we set up guidelines that gave us focus on how we should do things, and then we just turn our back to it. So, and I don't have a problem with it. I understand local. I understand supporting community. But another issue at some other point that needs to change.
And I remember back in the day, I mean, one of the reasons why that 1% come up about is that, I, I think was when we was talking about bridges, when you're talking about a million-dollar order, a million dollars is 101%. And we're, and we got back down into this, deals with the graders and all that other stuff, that that's, that was one of the deals where, and it's still, it's still there. You're right. It's still, the, the verbiage there is there to, to protect that, but.
That, that is, under my recommendation, that it was one thing that I did look out, was I reached out out of downtown to kind of get the correct verbiage of the policy, and we did figure the 1%. That's why the recommendation was shown.
I'll, I'll comment for just a second on this, knowing vehicles a little bit, Dodges are a little bit cheaper, less costly than a Chevrolet or GMC or a Ford. I can, in the begin, with the base price is cheaper to start. So that's probably some of it. You know, obviously, inventory plays into it, what they've got. Maybe they've had this truck a long time. It looks like a 2024 number one, and, and what we're quoting here for home and long mac is 2025s. You know, you've got those kind of costs to consider, even though I'm not opposed to buying something that's brand new a year earlier. I'm going back to, we're gonna, we need to buy this locally, period. That's, that's the way I see it.
Well, Hannah, sorry to put you on the spot, but it's obviously, looks like we've got a majority up here that wants to change or go against policy. Is that something we can do today, or do we need to?
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Well, there, there we go. All right.
I think it does set a bit of a dangerous precedent to do away with the 1% or to consider something on the basis of local. I might suggest that you instead consider wanting to have a one-year newer vehicle and award to the lowest bid among the 25s.
Good counsel, as always.
As always. Okay, any other questions from the Commission? Any public comment? Approach to, please, please state your name and.
My name's Tim Home, the owner of Home Automotive Center and Home Buick GMC. If we can approach the Commissioners, we just have some material that we, I think will support some of the conversations that we've heard from you today, that I think can help kind of support your, the thought process that you have.
Thanks, Chris.
So. All right, it's, good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to address the Commissioners directly and present a case for awarding our dealership the bid today on this vehicle. And I certainly don't want to go against David's advice, but this is, this is important to us. We wouldn't be here. So not asking you to be benevolent. We're not really trying to brag about what we're doing, but I did think I'd give you some, I think what are some facts that might be helpful. As Commissioner Vidrickson said, it's a one-year newer vehicle than the, the bid from Stivers. Stivers is in Alabama, a long ways away. They're representing the Dodge. You're going to ask your local Dodge dealer to, to take care of the vehicle if you have any issues with it. I'm not sure how excited they are or they aren't. I can't speak for them. But I know we'll certainly take care of your vehicle if you buy the Chevrolet. Now, what, what kind of impact do local businesses have to the community to kind of help support this idea? Well, to begin with, sales tax. Now, our dealership here in Salina has sold vehicles to over, well, to 100 different communities outside of this county. That's a lot. All that money that has come in has come to Salina County as opposed to maybe their county, or to Sedgwick County, or to McPherson County, or Ellis, or someplace else. And they're coming here. That money gets to come into the coffers. Year-to-date, we've collected $258,500 of sales, county sales tax money, and we're trending for about $350,000 for the year. Since we've been in Salina in 2020, we've collected over $1,100,000 worth of local county sales tax. And I think that's really pretty good, given being a new business, pandemic, no inventory, really for over two years, probably. So we still have a balance of this year to go. We have many years ahead of us to support Salina County. As we know, Stivers is not collecting any money for the benefit of the county or its residents. We pay property taxes, as you know. We pay that every year. I wouldn't say we're happy to, but we know that we do, and that's an important piece of the, the budget puzzle. Stivers, on the other hand, will Stevers, on the other hand, will collect, will contribute zero property tax this year or any year. As one of the Commissioners, I think Commissioner Vidrickson mentioned, we have a nearly $2 million in growing payroll, benefits the county, and it's multiplied many, many times in the county by our, by our employees. Stevers has no payroll to offer. Then what about local support and activities, agencies, and nonprofits? Our dealership has worked hard to be a valuable member of the community in many ways. We support lots of different activities, charities, and events. We just got a request right here from, from Salina Medical Community or the school. We'll support that. We support a lot. We'll spend several tens of thousands of dollars every year on charities, activities, different things that add to the fabric and the wellbeing of the community. And that doesn't even count the money that we spend with local businesses here to run our business operations. Again, Stevers will contribute nothing there or an out-of-county bidder in many cases. So in other words, they take our money and they don't really support anything here in the county to help us. So I think your actions today could send a very strong message that, you know, you support a, you know, a robust business community that's a sales tax generator, and that's a good business, I think, to support. I think the goals of the counties, such as the pay raises and other strategic efforts, are more easily pursued when you have good revenue stream. And I think that the actions that you send today will send a strong message that the county supports the efforts of the business community. So this, you know, fleet business is not lucrative. Businesses don't bid. We have four businesses here that could bid. Only two of us did. We're the only one here kind of, you know, proposing that you would consider our bid because it's important. I think if you would do business here locally, you'll be happy that you did. Can I answer any questions for you?
Nope.
That's kind of rattled off a lot. I just kind of wanted to give you some facts so you can support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. Any more? Okay.
Northern Manos Salina, reject all the bids, change your policy, then rebid it.
If there's no more public comment, I will bring it back to Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we purchase the Noxious Weed Truck for 2025 from Home Automotive Center for the 2025 Silverado Regular Cab for a total cost of $59,148.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion as second to purchase the 2025 Silverado Regular Cab for a total cost of $59,148. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Same point. That passes three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You bet.
Senior Services Quarterly Update with Rosie Walters, Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Commissioners. And this is my quarterly update for interval period July through September 2024. Accomplishments include Sunflower Affair. Senior Services had a booth at the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging Sunflower Field on September 24th. It was held at the Tony's Event Center. Dane Hanson Foundation. A grant application was submitted asking for replacement in extending the parking lot, a new digital sign, and repair of the outbuilding. A grant award, we just were notified of $25,000 we received. The total request, though, was for $408,000, so other grant opportunities will be sought out. The Verla Nesbit Jocelyn Foundation. A letter was sent to 10 different local foundations asking for their support to, to provide Christmas for Meals on Wheels for homebound seniors. The Verla Nesbit Jocelyn Foundation awarded us $9,000. These dollars will allow staff to provide shell-staple food for inclement weather when Meals on Wheels cannot be delivered, and provide Christmas gifts or candy and personal hygiene items for every Meals on Wheels senior. Dignity Care Home. This last August, staff was asked to participate in like a roundtable for their residents, and the discussion included food and activities that are held at the Senior Center. Kathy Diaz Dunn, the Meals on Wheels Coordinator, she attended a conference for Meals on Wheels America from August 12th through 16th in Baltimore. And the Public Library, the Health Department asked the Senior Services to participate in a little class that they had over at the Public Library, and the discussion included all the different services for seniors that are in Salina. The Busiest Days, Fried Chicken, of course, as always, 683 people were served that day, and Chicken Fried Steak was the second at 646. Total meals served for this quarter, July through September, 31,897. That brings our total for the year through September, 92,074. Of that 92,000, 93% of those are subsidized, which is the highest it's ever been. And then I'm giving you a little comparison to the same time of year from 2023 and 2022. So 2023, at the same time of year, we served 86,911 meals, and in 2022, 85,763. So quite a bit of difference. Upcoming Plans. Trinity, the new food contract provider, will start January 2nd, and a succession plan will start December of 2024. And they're actually coming to the center tomorrow, and they're going to talk to the existing staff. Veterans Day Event. November 8th, from 9 to 11, we're going to have our annual Veterans Day event. We're going to honor our vets by providing snacks. We're going to do Memorial Walk, and we have eight local vendors that are coming in, and each vendor's going to have a prize for our seniors that they can sign up for. We're going to have American flags and flags for each division of the military services in our south lawn, and then we'll do our Memorial Walk around that. Christmas for Meals on Wheels seniors. With that $9,000 we got from the Verla Nesbit Jocelyn Foundation, we're going to have an event on December 13th where we invite local vendors, and each vendor will bring a item, and we're going to stuff the bags for our Meals on Wheels recipients. So that will be December 13th if anybody would like to come. It's kind of a fun event. We pack 285 bags in about two hours, and then we ask the Sheriff's Office to come over and deliver all of those bags. It's a fun day. Fundraising. So right now, we've started our letter campaign for fundraising. We use these dollars to offset the cost of food and to provide services or programming for our local seniors. And last year, we raised 55,488. Volunteers. Meals on Wheels, the average daily population right now is 289. This is a 54% increase since the county took it over in 2018. The average volunteer rate is, volunteer route is 17 meals. The highest in that is 29, and the lowest is 11. So we're working on a volunteer campaign to try to recruit volunteers to deliver our Meals on Wheels. So we're going to meet with local organizations and businesses and try to get them to perform or allow their staff to perform community service to deliver those meals. The Garage Automotive Museum. The Senior Center has partnered with the Garage to allow seniors a free day to access their museum. The cost is discounted by the garage of $5 per senior, and Senior Services will use donor dollars to pay that $5 so they can get in free. The Garage staff are coming on November 13th, and they'll get all of our seniors signed up, and the free day will be that Friday. It's November 15th. So they're coming on Omelet Day, so it will be packed. Budget Update. So for this quarter, we have expend, or we have revenue. We have brought in $115,870 for a total revenue of $364,694. Expenses for this quarter are $206,492, for a total expenses of $721,958. So taking that into consideration, the revenue versus the expenses, the total cost to the county right now is at $357,264. So I did, most of the cost is actually the food contract. So I took that and compared it with our new contract. So based on the meals served, the new food contract cost would have been $372,019 from January to August. The existing contract cost is $437,744. This would have been a savings of $65,725 based off of our population and how the new contract bills. Our current donation account from January to September, we currently hold $193,321 in our donor accounts. And then our last grant that we have for Meals on Wheels America with the donations, we have a balance of $6,348 and 78. And then the last thing I would like to ask is that we're going to have our Thanksgiving meal at the Senior Center on November 22nd. So I would love to have the Commissioners come or anybody come and volunteer and help out. It's a crazy day. We will serve 500-plus on the floor that day. So everyone will have a job like serving pie, filling drinks.
Eating pie.
And I'll take any questions.
None for me.
Okay. Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Okay.
Treasurer's Annual and Third Quarter Idle Funds Report with Jim DeBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is my last year of giving you the annual Treasurer's Report. And what I did was I broke it down into four different columns. Number one, I want to go through the accounts, our investment, the abstract, and our idle fund report. To start out with, we have four bank accounts. Bank of Tesco, we have $326,128. Equity Bank, we have $2,070,108. And that's an ICS account, which is an insurance cash sweep account, which means we bid that out and we, the high bid was at 5.1% is what we were getting on interest from them. The neat part about an ICS account is we could transfer funds without a penalty. So if we decide to take funds out of there, put it into a CD that's drawing more interest or whatever the case may be, it will be without a penalty, and that's a fairly new thing that took place over probably the last five years. In Bennington State Bank, we have $38,739,44, which is our main bank account. And then in Plains Bank, we have $1,428,684, for a total of $42,563,965. For our certificates of deposit, we have $6,700,000 in CDs. I did remove that $2 million out of Equity Bank and put that into our accounts, which, if you look at the top there, it says as of October 1st, 2024, deposits are $8.7 million invested, and that's still an investment process. So in Equity Bank, we have $250,000 in CDs. Bank of Tesco, $2.1 million. Bank of the Plains, $200,000. Bennington State Bank, $1 million. And Exchange Bank, we have $3150,000. In petty cash, we have $5,050 cash on hand, $824.40. We currently have no money in the investment pool, and I will tell you that usually at the end of the year, banks will, our main bank will require that we take 30 million-plus dollars, put it into the municipal investment pool so they don't go over the billion-dollar mark, which costs them more money. We bring it back on January 3rd. I met with them last week, and they're feeling that we're just going to go ahead and leave it in there this year. They're already over the billion-dollar mark for that process. So our total Salina County funds is at $49,269,840. So any questions on those? So the abstract, which is done by the county clerk's office, and to answer an earlier question from Commissioner Wees, is done at the end of the fiscal year, the county fiscal year, and created by the clerk's office. The tangible general tax was $88,726,523. The special assessed tax was $1,485. In lieu of tax, we had none, and the tax increment finance was $1149,740. So by the time everything was done, the certified tax abstract was $91,362,188. The breakdown, what I did, instead of taking every single entity, as I combine, like all the school districts, the fire districts, the cemetery, the libraries, I put all those in one. Instead of giving you everything if you wish, I would be more than happy to give you the individual breakdown on those. But as you could see, instead of having to go through all of those, the total taxes ended up at $91,362,188. So having, as of October 1st of 2024, by the time you have the abated taxes, the plus escape tax, and I will invite the clerk to jump in, the net adjusted tax roll ended up at $90,756,774. We had $413,928 in refunds, and total unpaid taxes was at $1180,112. The percentage of delinquencies was only at 1.41%, which is.
Jim, I guess my question is, what recourse do we have for delinquent real estate tax? I mean, you know, that's, that's the bulk of that is, you know, $1.1 million in delinquent taxes. I mean.
After, after three years of unpaid taxes, we turn it over to the county counselor, and then there'll be a foreclosure sale.
Okay.
Within that. Do we usually get our money back? We forgive the back tax. The, whoever purchases the property will receive the current, has to pay the current tax plus whatever the bid is within that process. So do we ever get our full amount back? No, we don't.
Okay.
So, thanks for asking. And we'll probably have a sale again in December. We just had one not too long ago, but we'll probably have another sale in December. At least that's what the county counselor's talking about.
Okay. Any more, any other questions for Jim?
Okay. Idle, idle fund, very quickly, if you look at the third quarter year-to-date, we have brought in $640,942 compared to last year, which was $198,307. The difference of $442, 442, $635. The great part about that, that's a total of $1867,154. Without additional funds, I think we will exceed the $2 million mark. Once again, that is a record, at least from everything that I've been able to go back with. That is a record of interest earned for the county. So that's, we've been very blessed and very lucky to have that. And that's all that I have. Questions?
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Commissioner.
County Administrator's Update with Philip Smith-Haines, County Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners. As I've told you previously, it is the time of year where we start thinking about the Kansas Association of Counties Annual Conference. I previously asked about who would be our representative for K-CAM because their deadline is first. It's actually next Monday. But we have also received. But we have also received the request from KAC for those representatives. And we anticipate receiving a letter this week from K-Work for their representatives. So since I didn't get a lot of volunteer action with my first request, what I would suggest to the commission is a rotation. We could have Chairman Hay as our delegate for KAC with Vice Chair Sparks as the first alternate and Commissioner Shadwick as the second alternate. And then for K-Work, if we had Commissioner Sparks as the delegate and Commissioner Shadwick as the alternate. And then for K-CAM, maybe Commissioner Shadwick as the delegate and Chairman Hay as the alternate. So nobody has to be on for the entire time. That's just a suggestion. Obviously, commission can do what they want. I just need some names by Monday.
Good by me.
Sounds good.
Yep. Sounds good.
Commissioners' comments?
I attended the Department of Senior Services Quarterly Meeting. And I won't go into detail because Rosie did.
Yeah. None for me.
I'm good.
Announcements? And I'll just give a.
I'm sure you do.
Just give another announcement that we are still early voting this week from eight to five. We are also doing a Saturday voting that will be nine to four. And the last day to early vote is November 4th from 8:00 AM until noon. And today is the last day to request a ballot by mail, which requires you to complete an application for us to be able to send one to you. So we need that application in today. So if you have any questions, you're welcome to call our office.
Okay. Anything else? Good for the cause. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So I moved.
Second.
And a motion is second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes five zero. We will see you guys next week.